And this is Gavel to Gavel, WCBW TV's complete coverage of the Richmond City Council. And good evening once again, I'm Dick Harmon. Welcome to our first meeting of the month of February here in the year 2013. Taking a look at the overall of the agenda tonight, we have got 13 items on the consent agenda, one appointment, and two items on the regular agenda, but bunches of changes, so we'll go through those starting right now. Let's start off with the consent agenda, and we'll take a look first at item number one, ordinance 2012-192, and this is concerning a business license incentive program for qualifying businesses. This would exempt new businesses that locate within the city from paying taxes, paying business professional and occupational license taxes for a period not to exceed two years. That stays on consent agenda. Item two, ordinance 2012-233, this is erecting all way stop signs at North Shepherd Street and Stewart Avenue. That is being continued until the 25th of February. Item three, ordinance 2013-1, this authorizes the CAO to execute a lease as amended between Cataw Ventures as less or and City of Richmond as less e for the purpose of providing a temporary site for the East End Library at 3001 Nine Mile Road, Unit C and D for a period of six months. That stays on consent. Item four, ordinance 2013-2, and this is concerning taxi cab rates. This would provide that for a trip originating at Richmond International Airport, the rate should be $10 or the charge registered on the meter, whichever is greater, plus $2, so a $2 surcharge. That stays on consent agenda. Item five is ordinance 2013-3, and this order authorizes the CAO to accept $50,000 from the Department of Emergency Management and to appropriate the increase to the fiscal year special fund budget by increasing estimated revenues and the amount appropriated to the Department of Fire and Emergency Services by 50,000. And this is for the Richmond Metropolitan Service Area Public Outreach and Education Project. That stays on consent. Item six is ordinance 2013-4, and this authorizes a special use at 1815 and 1817 East Franklin Street. This is for the purpose of a multifamily dwelling with up to 13 dwelling units. Now, Planning Commission is recommending denial of this paper. What's been happening is technically they're moving it and they're continuing it, so it'll go to regular agenda and then be continued until the 25th of February. So we will not have any action except to move that and then continue it. Item number seven, ordinance 2013-5, this is a special use at 3600 Forest Hill Avenue. This is the Crossroads Coffee and Ice Cream Restaurant there, and this is for the purpose of giving live entertainment and outdoor dining area. Part and service and terms and conditions. That stays on consent agenda. Item number eight, ordinance 2013-8, this amends an ordinance as authorizing a special use of the property at 508 Libby Avenue for office use with accessory parking to authorize office use in the existing basement upon certain terms and conditions. That stays on consent. Item number nine, ordinance 2013-9, to close the public use and travel a part of West 24th Street located north of Perry between West 22nd and West 24th, and this consists of 2,584 square feet plus or minus upon certain terms and conditions. That stays on consent. Item number 10, ordinance 2013-11, special use at 4030 MacArthur Avenue for the purpose of permitting an outdoor dining area and expansion of the existing building upon certain terms and conditions. That will stay on consent. Item 11, 2013-12, and this is concerning parking violations for non- and penalties for noncompliance with certain parking requirements, both for the purpose of requiring that the curb side wheels of vehicles parked on streets parallel to the curb shall be no more than 12 inches from the curb, and imposing a fine for the violation of such requirement. So you need to be within 12 inches of the curb in parallel parking. That one, public safety, is approved with an amendment, but it's going to be continued until our next meeting, which will be on the 25th of February. Item 12, ordinance 2013-18, and this is accepting $135,185 from the Department of Homeland Security approving that increase to fiscal year 2012/13, which we are in right now, special fund budget. And this would be for the Department of Fire and Emergency Services for providing the purchase of computer hardware and software to increase critical information sharing and collaboration events between the city and other entities at the Port of Richmond and generally within the city of Richmond. So that's a plus for us, that's money coming in from the federal government. That stays on consent. Item number 13, ordinance 2013-19, and that's imposing a moratorium on acceptance of applications from nonprofit organizations for exemption from real or tangible property. You remember, at the last meeting we went through, they just kind of wiped out the amendment, and it got a little confusing. Well, this one's putting a little more clarity to it, and it's giving the people here a little more time to work on with the exemptions. So that's what this paper basically does. Appointments and reappointments, just one appointment, and that's Carol Murray, member of the Clean City Commission, for a term commencing upon adoption of this resolution, and it'll terminate on January 28th of 2015. Then we get to the regular agenda. Well, guess what's going to happen? Basically, nothing. Ordinance 2012-29, special use at 122 Tempsford Lane. This one's been around for about a year. It's going to be continued for another two weeks until the 25th of February. Item 16, and this is a special use at 2501 Monument Avenue for the purpose of museum for architecture with outdoor events, reception facility. This one's been around for a little while, too. That's going to be continued until four weeks from now. That'll be March 11th. That'll be our first meeting in March. And item 17, resolution 2013-R8, and this is the policy that the patron, trying to put this in simple terms, if a patron has a proposal that would result in reduction of existing revenue sources, they've also got to identify an alternative revenue source to offset the proposed reduction. And proposals that would result in the reduction of an existing revenue source must be introduced only during the city's annual budget process. So if they want to take money out, they've got to find a way to get money back in, and that's going to be during the budget process time. So where do we stand at? Okay, we started out with 17 items. We had 13 on consent agenda, one's being continued, one's being amended and continued, and one's being moved and then continued. So that puts us down to 10 items on consent agenda. One appointment, that stays on there. Regular agenda, well, we had three items plus the one that was being moved there, but all those are going to be continued. So we end up with no items on the regular agenda, so that means we'll have no regular agenda items to be heard tonight. Then we get to awards and recognitions. We've got two awards tonight. One, Corey Harris, American Blues and Reggae musician. He's going to be doing a concert tonight, and it's going to be for the Fulton Hill Memorial Park that's being built, and he's going to be down here receiving Richmond Recognition Award, and also the Bellevue Merchants Association will get a community service award. This is recognizing and honoring their association's annual Christmas on MacArthur event, and thanks its members and supporters for all the work they've done. Then we get to the citizens' comment period. Well, we have seven people speaking, one to talk about lack of public restrooms downtown, one to talk about raises for city employees, one will be inviting council members to attend the Read Across America at Windville School, and then four people speaking in support of Police Chief Nowood. That's the citizens' comment period. Now, every once in a while, we like to go through and run down because the order business did change about a year ago, and this is the way it goes right now. It will start off with the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, the roll call, the emergency evacuation plan. Then they go to action on appointments and reappointments, followed by awards and presentations. Then they go through the agenda review and amendments, followed by action items. We get to the regular agenda and motions, then the citizens' comment period, then the consent agenda, then they approve the minutes of previous meetings, then we have the reports and announcements by the council members and the president, then they introduce a new legislation, then the adjournment. That's the way it goes. Now, once in a while, two people say, well, now, what do you mean consent agenda? How does that differ from the regular agenda? Well, items on the consent agenda are basically considered routine, non-controversial, and the consent agenda provides a method for rather expeditious handling of items that don't require discussion on each individual item. They'll be approved by a single roll call vote across the street at General Assembly. They say this will be voted on in the block. Now, there is a citizen, there is a public information period, there is a time where you can speak to any item on that council's consent agenda when the public comment period is announced by the president. Now, any person speaking to one or more items than consent agenda, no matter how many items, they still must restrict those comments to a total of three minutes. So that is what's on the consent agenda. Citizens' comment period, it's an opportunity for citizens to come down here, address the council, and it doesn't have to be anything on the agenda, but you must schedule your appearance with the office of the city clerk no later than 12 noon on the date of the meeting. Each speaker has three minutes to make their comments, and an individual may appear before council for citizens' comment period no more than four times per year and no more than once within a three-month period. And if you have citizens' participation, you should state your full legal name and the organization you might be representing. You're permitted to address or question the chief administrative officer, city attorney, city clerk. You are not permitted to address them or question them. Questions should be directed to the president, who may, at his discretion, let us a response. If you're speaking to an agenda item, you have three minutes. No individual may speak for more than 10 minutes total throughout the evening, and you must express your, or you can express yours, if you don't want to come down here and talk, you can always send a written presentation. That's allowed as well. Now, we're going to be getting started in just a few minutes. We had a rather short informal meeting, couple of presentations, and then the docket review, then they went into a closed session. They're back now, getting ready to start tonight's regular Richmond City Council meeting, and so we'll be joining them in just a minute or two. I'm Dick Harmon, stay tuned.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's 6 o'clock. If council members will take their seat, we can begin. At this point, I see a quorum of councilor on the dais. Therefore, I'll call this meeting together. I'd ask that at this point, we stand for the invocation to be given by John Westbrook of Fifth Street Baptist, and afterwards, the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. To our God, Creator of the universe and Sustainer of all that is within, we invite your presence into this, the people's chamber, and among us, the governing body of the city of Richmond, Virginia. We pray that you would endow us with your spirit and grant us a wee bit of your wisdom such that we can be diligent in our deliberations, compassionate in our considerations, and dutiful in our decisions. Keep us mindful that we are stewards of the people's assets and not ours, and that we are held accountable for the well-being of the citizens of Richmond, Virginia. May our actions be in accordance with your perfect will. Please hear and answer our prayer, and may the words of our mouths and the meditations of our hearts be acceptable in your sight. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. You may be seated. Mr. Clerk, at this point, would you please give the emergency evacuation plan?
Yes, Mr. President. Before I do that, I believe all of the members are present, and I'm looking for Mr. Blouse, except Mr. Blouse. Next, we'll have...
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Actually, we're going to do something a little bit different tonight. We have some regional visitors with us that I would like to introduce. John Vitolkas, the county manager from Henrico County, and some of his staff are here, and I believe he'd like to bring greetings.
Mr. President, Madam Vice President, members of council, Mr. Marshall, I think I saw him. I was in a meeting with Mr. Marshall earlier today, and I've got County Attorney Joe Rappasarda with me, County Attorney Risa South, and Deputy County Manager Tim Foster. We were meeting on an issue of mutual concern, and I just, Charles asked me to stop by, the president asked me to stop by and make a few comments and say hello, and I think it is entirely appropriate that I do that. Local government is where the rubber meets the road. I wish you the best on your deliberations, especially the budget deliberations that you will be undergoing very shortly. I do think taking the opportunity to say hello every so often is important, especially for me personally. I don't know, I doubt many of you know this, but years ago, I had the opportunity to intern with your budget office when we had a city manager by the name of Robert Bob. So every time I come into this building, I feel like I'm coming home. So thank you for the opportunity to offer you a few comments. I wish you luck in your deliberations tonight, and especially with your budget discussions in the months that come.
Thank you, Mr. Vitolkas.
Thank you.
And folks from Henrico, thank you so much for taking the time to come back and say hello. When we talk about regionalism in practice, Mr. Vitolkas has hit the nail on the head. It requires getting together and talking in order to get things done for all of our constituents. Mr. Clerk, at this point, may we please determine if all members are accounted for?
Yes, all members are present. Thank you. Now, we will have the council evacuation announcement. Upon activation of the emergency alarm signal, all persons should immediately exit the building. Please use the exits to the left or right front of the council chambers or the east or west stairwears outside the rear doors of the chamber. Do not use the elevator or the escalators. After exiting the building, proceed to the assembly area located in the parking lot bordered by Clay, 8th and 9th Streets. Citizens and employees should assist visually and hearing impaired visitors with exiting the building. Next, I'll read to you on the citizens' request to sign up to speak during citizen comment period, some of the rules and guidelines.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Please continue.
Citizen comment period is an opportunity for persons to present comments and information to council not pertaining to any item on the meeting agenda for that evening. Persons wishing to address council during the citizen comment period are generally allowed three minutes to speak. Persons appearing before council are not allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, use language of a personal nature which insults or demeans any person, including comments directed at public officials or staff members that are not related to their official duties, or address or question staff members directly. All questions are to be directed to the president of council. Failure to adhere to the guidelines may result in speakers forfeiting any remaining time and further disciplinary actions as necessary, which could include barring from attendance of future meetings of the city council for a period of six months.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. At this point, are there any actions on appointments or reappointments?
Yes, we have one appointment. That's resolution number 2013-R19, Ms. Carol Murray. Would you please stand? Ms. Murray is a member of the Clean City Commission, is being appointed to the member of the Clean City Commission for a term commencing upon adoption of this resolution and terminating January 28th, 2015.
Much, any other reappointments?
No, that's it.
Thank you very much. After the vote is taken on the appointment, if you would please step out to the clerk's office where you will have your oath taken. But you don't have to go until after we vote.
Right.
If you just sit tight until after we vote, then you can go and have your oath taken. Thank you.
Okay, council is now voting on tonight's appointment. Mr. Blouse?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Vice President Robinson?
She stepped away, please pass by for a moment.
Mr. Acolesco?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Mr. Clerk, before you go any further, the attorney has brought to my attention, we need to have a public hearing on this matter. Is there anyone from the audience willing to speak in favor or opposition? Seeing none, please retake the vote, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, we will now take a vote on the appointment. I'll call the names. Mr. Blouse?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Acolesco?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
Just very, thank you so much for bearing with us during some technical difficulties there. You can step out to the clerk's office where they'll administer the oath for you. Thank you for your service.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have awards and presentations.
Yes, sir. At this point, I think we'd like to do Mr. Harris and then Bellevue.
Okay, this is an award, a recognition award to Mr. Harris, an American Blues and Reggae musician, that's being presented by Mrs. Newbill and Mr. Acolesco. The Honorable Members of Richmond City Council do hereby officially recognize, honor, and celebrate the, celebrate the, celebrate the... The Honorable Members of City Council do hereby recognize, honor, and celebrate Mr. Harris, Mr. Corey Harris, American Blues and Reggae musician, and thank him for chronicling the history of Richmond's Fulton neighborhood and his latest album Fulton Blues, and for the performing of a benefit concert tonight for the Fulton Memorial Park that is being built by the Richmond Department of Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities in the Richmond East End 7th District, Volus District, which will serve to preserve the very history he sings about. Moving to the Fulton neighborhood area three years ago, Mr. Harris was inspired by the human story, struggle, and strife of this once thriving, historically black neighborhood that was raised in the 1970s. The planned new park will serve to honor the neighborhood and to celebrate Richmond's African-American history. Paying homage to his muse, Mr. Harris named his latest album, released last month, Fulton Blues. His 12th album to date, Fulton Blues includes a connection of original songs that reflect many important names and places that make up the Richmond historic landscape and experience. Being recognized this month during Black History Month, Mr. Harris' album in the Fulton Memorial Park project, both will serve to showcase, preserve, and promote to the world the importance of African-American history in Richmond, Virginia. A world-renowned guitarist, vocalist, and songwriter, and bandleader, Mr. Harris was born and raised near Denver, Colorado. He earned his bachelor's degree and was awarded an honorary doctorate from Bates College in Lewiston, Maine. Beginning his career as a street singer in New Orleans, Louisiana, Mr. Harris has performed internationally, and in 2007 was named a John D. and Catherine T. MacArthur Foundation MacArthur Fellow, known as the Genius Award. This annual grant recognizes a select number of individuals each year for their intelligence, innovation, and creativity. Richmond City Council is privileged and honored to have the bounty and benefit of such a creative and important musical artist as Mr. Harris, living among us as a member of the Richmond Metro- Metro community, and is fortunate to have his dedication in helping to record Richmond's important narrative. Now, therefore, Richmond City Council does hereby recognize, honor, and celebrate Mr. Corey Harris, American blues and reggae musician, and thank him for chronicling the history of Richmond's Fulton neighborhood and his latest album, Fulton Blues, and for performing a benefit concert tonight for the Fulton Memorial Park that is being built by the Richmond Department of Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities in Richmond's East End Seventh Volta District, will serve to preserve the very history he sings about. Ms. Newbill.
Okay. I just want to express my sincere thanks and appreciation on behalf of the citizens of the city of Richmond, but especially the residents of the East End, and especially the residents of Fulton. When Mr. Agalesto said, "Well, Corey Harris," and I said, "I don't know him," and he said, "Fulton?" I said, "Our Fulton, my Fulton?" He said, "Yes." And you became, of course, my favorite blues performer in the entire world. And so what I really just want to say, thank you for using your extraordinary talents and gifts to chronicle the history of a community in our city, and for then being gracious enough to put that at disposal of the community, to perform a benefit concert for a memorial park that will actually preserve that very history that you have chronicled in your album, and puts that history on the world map, because you are an international performer. And just really want to thank you so very, very much on behalf of our community, and again, on behalf of the residents of especially Fulton, who are excited and are waiting for you at the Bird Theater, a couple of whom are out in the audience. So really want to express our sincere thanks and appreciation. You could have written about any community, anywhere you chose a community that is important to our city, important to the East End, and as I said, putting that history on the world map in a way that it will never be forgotten, and the benefit concert will allow us to preserve that history further through the park. So I could probably, you have become my favorite. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Corey, I'm just gonna call you Corey, if I may. Your compassion for the community is evidenced in your lyrics and in what you have developed as a full album, and your generosity to the community is what you're offering yourself up to for tonight with this benefit concert. I think we love citizens like yourself, who are both compassionate and generous, and who embrace your new home with complete joy and sorrow when you understand what your community has gone through over time. So in addition to Dr. Newbill, I just wanted to say thank you very much for allowing us the honor to recognize your contributions. I'm just gonna say one thing, because I think that this is unusual, but just to signify how generous you are. The first time I had the occasion to reach you was slightly removed with my brother, and there was a musician from Greece, a folk musician from Greece, who knew your music, lived on a remote island of Greece, and came to the United States with the hope of meeting you. And you were generous enough to meet with him, perform with him, and I think having somebody like yourself to document the story of Fulton, it just couldn't have been a better suited person. So thank you very much for doing the music that you do and for enliving our world with it.
Thank you.
Well, I'm very honored. I feel very happy to be here among you. I can say that this has been a wonderful journey. It's happened very quickly. I never imagined, when I sat down to write this tune, that my inspiration would lead to other people being inspired and appreciating the music. It really, it's really taken me, taken me back. I'm very honored, and I want to thank you. And my hope is that in writing this tune, that I have been able to draw attention to stories, not only the story of Fulton and the story of communities like Fulton and Richmond, but the story of communities like Fulton all over the country, because this is a problem that has been going on really the last hundred years or more. And so it's really my sincere hope that as the arts serves to inspire people, that in this instance, the art of music has served to inspire people, to hold history close to their hearts, and to remember what has gone before, because if you don't know where you've come from, there's no way you'll know where you're going. So I want to thank you all very much for the acknowledgement, and I wish you all very well. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. President, the next award is a Community Service Award, presented by Mr. Hilbert, and that's going to the Bellevue Merchants Association. The Honorable Members of City Council do hereby officially recognize, honor, and celebrate the Bellevue Merchants Association for its Christmas on MacArthur event. Established in 2000, the Bellevue Merchants Association began producing its Christmas on MacArthur event in 2005 as a way to further increase its collaborative neighborhood revitalization and beautification efforts in support of businesses in the community. Held annually on the second Saturday in December, the Bellevue Merchants Association Christmas on MacArthur event spans a four-block area of MacArthur Avenue in Richmond's Bellevue neighborhood. Located in Richmond's North Side, the event is free and open to the public and serves as a benefit for the U.S. Marine Corps Reserve Toys for Tots Program, which collects and distributes Christmas gifts to the underprivileged children each year. Each year, the event draws hundreds of families who come out to join the festival, donate, shop, and share time together. Christmas on MacArthur begins in pageant style with a parade, displays by local artists and craft people, and special activities for each of the merchants on MacArthur Avenue, which includes specialty shops, real estate, antique, restaurants, yogurt, and local markets. In past years, Christmas on MacArthur has been the single largest contributor in the Richmond's area to the U.S. Marine Corps Reserve Toys for Tots Program. Now, therefore, Richmond City Council does hereby officially recognize, honor, and celebrate the Bellevue Merchants Association for producing the annual Christmas on MacArthur event, and thanks its members, supporters, and participants to helping to make our city an even better place to live, work, and raise a family. Mr. Hilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. President, Madam Vice President, members of council, those gathered, I'm really honored to present this award and to offer my personal appreciation for what you all have done for the North Side. Let me go back here, if I may, and just talk about what you all have done to improve the quality of life in just your day-to-day operations of the city. There are so many things, so many opportunities for people in the Bellevue community to walk to a restaurant, to wine store, and I know I'm gonna leave a bunch of people out here, shop for antiques, get a cup of coffee, just so many things. And I can tell you that a few years ago, I had a friend of mine, his brother moved to Bellevue, and he said, "I've died and gone to Mayberry." That I can walk down and get anything that I want. There's movies on Friday night that are free, family-oriented movies, and so I just want to personally thank you for what you've done. And on top of all of that, you've put on this Christmas on MacArthur, which is really a wonderful event. It's time to bring the community together, and it's so great to have an opportunity to see your neighbors in that kind of commerce setting as opposed to seeing them in the grocery store, which may or may not be located in the city. So I'm glad that you all have created real neighborhood. The single largest contributor to Toys for Tots in the metro area as a result of this event, that's something of which we are so proud, and we, as a council, wanted to thank you for your involvement in our community. You've made such a difference, and you have a partnership here with the school, Holton Elementary. David Hudson, thank you for coming, and we always appreciate what you've done. A gentleman that wasn't able to be with us this evening, Charles McGuigan, from north of the James Magazine, certainly instrumental in highlighting the various merchants along the avenue here. So I just want to present you this award on behalf of council, and thank you so much, and we'll be looking to collaborating with you in the future. Looks like, Bob, you've been nominated. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, Madam Vice President, and members of city council. The merchants of MacArthur Avenue have decided that it's time for us to give back to the community. We did this nine years ago when we started this event. It started off in a parking lot. It grew through the years. Our first year, we teamed up with our beloved Sergeant Santa, God rest him, and as you well know, he is one of, he was one of the biggest civil servants in this city. He did more for this city, for the underprivileged, than anybody I can think of. But we decided to team up with him. We teamed up with him the first year, and then the second year, and unfortunately, he passed, and then we got together with the Marines, because we wanted to continue on with this, and the growth has been phenomenal. Two years ago, we contacted Mr. Hudson, David Hudson, principal of Lynnwood-Holton School, which even made it more successful. Mr. Hudson had played a big, big role in our first year with him, and he's done an exceptional job the second year. But all the merchants along the block want to support the city, want to support the residents of Bellevue, Ginner Park, Battery Park, and surrounding area, and we appreciate the opportunity, and we appreciate the award to just be a part of the city of Richmond. Thank you.
At this point, we'll move on to the agenda review and amendments. Okay, starting with the consent agenda. Item number two, ordinance number 2012-233, continued till February the 25th. Item number six, ordinance number 2013-4, continued till February the 25th.
And I believe we're moving this, referring it to land use?
Yes. That will be moved to the regular agenda and be referred to the Land Use Housing and Item number 11, that paper is being continued till February the 25th.
And, Mr. Clerk, I need to stop you there. I believe Mr. Agalesto has something he needs to say about paper number 11.
Thank you very much. This paper went before Public Safety, and there was a recommendation to amend it, and I'd like to introduce the amendment tonight, if I may. And shall I just read the amendment?
Mr. Clerk, excuse me. Mr. Agalesto, I don't think you need to do that. If you want to just give a brief comment about what you are going to be doing, it was the city attorney's belief that we didn't have to actually introduce the amendment in the council. It will be introduced, but we wanted to give you a chance to say, "Look, this is why it happened the way it did."
Sure. We're simply trying to add a clause into this ordinance that exempts all streets that have no curb. So any roadway that does not have a curb, we will exempt from this proposed ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Agalesto. Mr. Clerk, thank you for dealing with me, as we had to make that slight change. Please continue.
Next, we have item number 15, ordinance number 2012-29, that paper is continued until February the 25th. Item number 16, ordinance number 2012-168, that paper is continued until March the 11th. And item number 17, Resolution Number 2013-R8, continued till March the 11th. Those are all the amendments to tonight's agendas. I need a motion to accept the amended agenda as presented.
Aye, so move.
Okay, council is voting on the amended agenda. Mr. Blouse?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Vice President Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Agalesto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert? Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
President Samuel?
Aye.
The amended agenda is before you.
Thank you very much. At this point, there are no regular agenda motions? Is there, there's no regular agenda or motions, is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. President.
Wonderful. In that case, let's move straight on to the citizen comment period.
Okay, our first citizen to sign up for tonight is Darlene Richardson. She's not present. Our next speaker is Melvin Jones.
My name is Melvin Jones. I'm a citizen of Richmond, Virginia. I heard something really nice tonight, compassion. That's what our police chief has got, compassion for the community. I wish the mayor and everybody else would think about that. I'd like to discuss about some things that went on in the city and why the city employees couldn't get a raise. Back last year, the city accepted $65 million from Richmond RMA. They gave $10 million to the landmark for re, whatever they did to it. I don't know what they did. And they also gave $15 million to Bond Secure and the Washington Redskins and property on Patterson Avenue. And I guess what I want to say is, the reason why I came here, because I really feel like the city employees are due a raise. The state is giving their employees a raise. The payroll taxes are going up to 6.2%. So I recommend for the city council and the mayor's office to give the city employees a 4.2% raise or a 5.2%, and it can be done. My thing is, you have to take pride in your employees, more or less these other folks that are coming into town. These employees catch the bus to work, they buy food in the city, they do parking, and you know, I heard some compassionate things at the police academy about police officers getting their houses foreclosed, police officers leaving the city. You know, we need to keep the police chief here. He's got compassion, and you can see it this week, too. And also, I will petition the federal court to investigate social services to find out where those files gone, because that's taxpayers' money. The federal government funds social services, and if the city doesn't have the guts to do it, I will go over to the federal court and petition it, and stop all deletement of computers and getting rid of all documents, hard copied documents. And the city attorney needs to help, and also, the auditor, he's got a lot on his hands right now, because a lot of departments don't want him to come in and do his job. So, city council, y'all need to take a heart of this. The city employees need a raise. They haven't had a raise in five years. The city retirees need a colon, and like I said, you need to do what you need to do. If you don't want to do it, I will take the initiative to go over to the federal court and get an injunction against the city, because you're not doing what you're doing. and get an injunction against the city, because you're not doing what you're supposed to do. I mean, people are ripping us off, and then you give them our servants paid to get the heck out of Richmond? I mean, come on now, that's not right. So if you can't keep the police chief here, I mean, I think all y'all should resign, including the mayor, because I understand the mayor is trying to run for governor. Yeah, that's a horrible note. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Lola McDowell.
Good evening, President Samuel, and members of the City Council. My name is Lola Van McDowell, and I am a kindergarten teacher at Woodville Elementary School, coordinator of Dr. Seuss, excuse me, Read Across America Celebration, and a 47-year veteran teacher. I'm here to invite you to Woodville Elementary School to celebrate our Read Across America. Dr. Seuss's 108th birthday is on March the 4th. In honor of this celebration, we at Woodville Elementary are gearing up once again for the nation's biggest celebration in reading, Read Across America. I hope you have already received your invitations. They were brought to you great. And this year, we will celebrate on Friday, March the 8th, and we would like to invite you to come to our school during that day, anytime between 9:00 and 2:00 p.m. We will have books available for you to read. We would like for you to wear, to don this hat, and we will have one for you, if you don't have one, on that day to read to our children. This is a very exciting day for our children, and Woodville has been celebrating this day ever since it began, and we have the largest celebration. We usually have almost 100 readers to come to our school, so we're excited about that day. Once again, I will be coordinating this school activity. Please contact me if you're interested in reading, and let me know what time if you would like to come that day. You will be joining the school board members, legislators, the mayor, the governor, and any other people that I have invited. I've even gone national this time. I'm trying to invite TV nationalities. We have WTVR, we have Channel 8, Channel 12, anybody who wants to come to read, excuse me, this weather, to my school, I am inviting. If you have any other guests that you would like to come, just let me know, and I would love to have them. Once again, March the 8th, between 9:00 and 2:00. Thank you. Sorry. Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Clerk?
Our next speaker is Butch Johnson.
Mr. President, Madam Vice President, City Council members, I am Butch Johnson, and I am the founder of the Northside Outreach Center. It's a faith-based organization operating in the Holland Park community. I am also a member of the Faith Leaders Partnership, which is a coalition of faith leaders that work together in partnership with the Richmond Police Department with two objectives of reducing crime and increasing the quality of life for the citizens in Richmond. Chief Norwood has led that coalition and provided tremendous leadership for that. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf as an active member of that Faith Leaders Partnership, and we are united in our support of Chief Norwood's remaining in the position as police chief in Richmond. His job performance speaks for itself. We've had a reduction in violent crime each of the four years that he's been in office. He has provided tremendous leadership that's already been articulated tonight in a department that has been going through some very difficult, turbulent economic times, and yet his force is highly motivated, the morale is high, and the results are almost off the chain. There's also so many personal stories I could tell you about Chief Norwood and how he truly cares about people. I have walked side by side with this man in high crime areas, and he bends down and touches people and speaks a word of encouragement. He truly loves and cares people in our city. As a member of this Faith Leaders Partnership, we would ask City Council to join the efforts of the faith leaders in the city of Richmond, to throw your support behind keeping Chief Norwood. He is good for the department, he is good for the citizens in our city, and he is good for Richmond as a whole. Tomorrow night, we are having a rally. The faith leaders are organized a rally in support of Chief Norwood. It's at 3,001 Second Avenue Fresh Anointing Cathedral. The rally starts at 6:30. I would love to have each one of y'all there in support of Chief Norwood. Thank you so much for your time here tonight. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next speaker, Mr. Clerk?
Our next speaker is Pastor Alex Boyd.
Good evening. My name is Alex Boyd. Please forgive me, my raspy voice. I serve as pastor of the Living Faith Christian Fellowship Church of God in Christ in the 8th District in South Richmond. I'm here tonight to make this statement at a time when there is great anxiety and uncertainty about the status of Chief Brian Norwood as chief of the Richmond Police Department. Having had the opportunity to personally work with and observe every chief, beginning with Chief Marty Tavsky, I've reached the conclusion that public safety will be set back tremendously if Chief Norwood is forced out, as some media outlets are reporting. First of all, for full disclosure, I was an organizing partner in the Richmond Police Department's Faith Leaders Partnership, which was founded by Chief Norwood. I currently sit on the steering committee, and I meet with Chief Norwood and his command staff regularly to formulate community strategies and act as a liaison between the police department and the broader faith community. In working in this capacity with Chief Norwood, not only have I personally witnessed his visionary leadership of the department, I've also seen his commitment to the people of our city. His commitment is manifested not only in his determination to reduce crime in our city, especially violent crime, not only his loyal obligation to the men and women of his department in providing them with the best training and equipment that's currently available, not only in his visionary leadership to bring together all stakeholders for their input in defining and solving the problems of our city, but I see something more important than all of that. As I observe Chief Norwood, I see a passion, almost a fanatical drive, that I didn't see in his predecessors. That passion is for the people of our city. Surely Mayor Jones can find another person to lead the police department. I wholeheartedly support his right to do so. Law enforcement professionals all across the country would eagerly accept the challenge of leading the great officers of that department in a world-class city like Richmond. In fact, there are already several people already with the department who would provide excellent leadership. However, it's bigger than that. Rarely, maybe once in a generation, God raises up a leader perfectly fit to lead a certain organization at a crucial time in that organization's history. We've seen it with Abraham Lincoln, we saw it with Martin Luther King. Mr. President, as I close, please understand that I'm not here to defend Chief Norwood. I'm a preacher, not a politician. I was born and raised in Richmond, lived there all my life. I simply want you and others to know that Richmond is blessed and should be honored to have a great leader of the caliber of Chief Norwood. If Chief Norwood leaves Richmond for another city for any eternity, all of us will have to admit to ourselves that the city that he's in is better off than our city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Trammell. While Ms. Trammell is talking, if Reverend Broaddus and Mr. Young would come up to the microphone to form a line, we'd appreciate it. Yes, Ms. Trammell?
I just wanted to pass you know, I'm going to save my comments until after the others speak, but I'm going to make, I'm going to make a few statements after the other speakers speak, okay?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Clerk, is Ms. Reverend Broaddus next?
Yes, Mr. President, Reverend Sharon Broaddus.
Yes, that's my name, and good evening to all of you, and thank you for allowing me to speak before the group. I'm going to sort of piggyback on Reverend Boyd, and I'm going to quote one of the chief police for Henrico County. He made the statement, "It would be a huge loss for the region if Chief Norwood left." And I had a chance to talk with the Chief Middleton, and he also said that Chief Norwood brought the chiefs together for each county, and that he was an outstanding upward man, a man of integrity. And I agree. I've been around many leaders, but Chief Norwood, his word is his word, is his bond. And he is considered, very concerned with the citizens of Richmond. Not only does he send us out as faith leaders to a crime area, I just left, that's Mosby Court, doing a walkthrough with the other police officers, and Chief joins us sometimes. He has a heart of compassion. We were doing a health fair over in Hillside Court, where I was having a lot of trouble. Those people in those area, they respect him as a police officer, a chief, and they like his, his force, his task. One little girl came up to him, and it touched my heart. I watch people. She said, "Are those clothes free?" Chief said, "Yes, honey, they're free." She said, "Will you help me pick out clothes?" And he smiled at her. He said, "Well, I'll do the best I can." And she said, "Well, can I get my sister?" He said, "Yes." And I was standing by him, and we smiled. Chief took the time with that little girl to pick out clothes. He could have handed her off to me. I was standing there, but he did it himself, and the child was happy, and the family was happy that they had school clothes. If it was not for Chief Norwood, the faith leaders would not function like we're functioning now and know the things that we know. So I am appealing to you all, if there's anything you can do to help keep our chief, it would be good. Sure, you can bring someone up within the ranks, but why I'm moved for a man that's doing a great job, that even the hoolums look up to him. They don't like him because they know he's coming after him, but they even respect him. I've heard him say it. God bless each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Reverend Broaddus. Mr. Clerk?
Our next speaker is Joshua Young.
President, council members, I heard a man speak tonight and talk about the chief's compassion. I heard another man talk about his leadership in the police department, and then I heard the reverend talk about him as a person. Nobody knows that better than the young adult police commissioners, the organization that the chief himself started five years ago, for us to meet every Thursday for two hours, for us to talk about things facing our communities, for us to be advocates for our youth. It may be Richmond's best-kept secret, and we might be the spokespeople for over 1,000, 3,000, however so, and so forth, but all I know is that every week when we met with the chief, he was there. He shared kind of words with us, he talked to us, he took us out into the community, not to mention, he took us into his own parents' house in Hampton. Now, I've never met anybody that would just bring us around the family and treat us as his own, and spend the whole day with us, bust us down there and bring us back, feed us and everything. That's the type of man you're talking about when you talk about Chief Norwood, and why I have no power to keep him here, or make an appeal, or anything like that, because I'm just a child. But I will say that him as a leader, him as a person, is truly exceptional. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Young. Appreciate it.
Mr. President, those are all of our tonight's speakers.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Trammell?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the speakers that came here tonight to speak in support of our police chief. The young man that just spoke, he lives in 8th District, off a terminal, Pompey Springs, and also Pastor Boyd, you have attended so many of our meetings in 8th District, because you live in 8th District. And you've seen the chief there, you've seen the chief reach out to the poorest of the poor, some of the ones that had nothing to eat when they came into the meetings, some that poured their heart out to our chief, even the young children, when he would come to the meetings, they would hug him. The seniors would say, "Thank you for coming, chief, thank you for listening to us." And you know, our chief is the shining star of Richmond, Virginia. Our chief, he is the shining star of Richmond, Virginia. Without him, where we're going to be? Where we're going to be? Sure, I do not understand because he's done nothing wrong. He's been there for us 24/7. He's not done anything personally for me, he's done it for the 8th District and for the city of Richmond, to reach out to those children, to reach out to the seniors, to reach out to anyone that has come to him and said, "I need help," or "Can you just listen to me?" And then to say that we don't want him anymore? That's wrong. We do want him. We don't want him to go, we want him to stay. And as I have said before, we have fought to get rid of police chiefs, but we have never, ever, that I can remember, living in the city 54 years in the 8th District, to fight to keep a chief. We want him to stay. We want to send a message out to the mayor, don't make him go, let him stay, and don't use it if he leaves, oh, he wanted to go. No, he doesn't. He has said right on Channel 6, "I want to stay. I want to stay in Richmond." And it is us, we need to send a message out to the mayor and to others, we don't want him to go, we're going to fight to keep him here. We're going to fight to keep this chief here, to continue to do what he has done since he's been here. And who cares who brought him here? We don't care who brought him here. We want him to stay, to continue to do what we have asked him to do. Community policing, those police officers look up to that chief, to our police chief. Surrounding counties, we've been on TV, they've asked, "Has Richmond, Virginia did it?" We did it because of our police chief, and because of all of us wanting to work with him. I can remember back in the time, in 1996, we wouldn't even talk to a police officer or to that chief, and he wouldn't talk to us either. And crime was what, 160 homicides? Children and mothers and grandmothers sleeping in bathtubs, dodging bullets not far from my house, where I've seen 12-year-olds shot in the head. And this is the first time that we've had faith-based come out here and beg for us, us nine council members. Dead gone, if we're not going to do our job, what do you need us for? If we're not going to fight for what is right, what are we going to sit up here for?
Folks, I appreciate the clapping for Ms. Trammell's comments, however, council rules forbid applause during any point of a report except for during awards and presentations. So if you could, please hold your applause, I'd appreciate it. Ms. Trammell, I apologize for interrupting you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Just remember, come out tomorrow to that rally and support our police chief. Please come out tomorrow night at 6:30 and show him, doesn't matter if you live in the city, whatever, come out there and support our police chief. We want to keep him here with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms.
And if anyone has any questions, you can call my house. My home number's 233-7382. Again, 233-7382, that's my home. My personal cell is 240-5050. My personal cell is (240) 5050. And I live at 2709 H-A-D-E-N, Hayden Avenue, Richmond.
Thank you, Ms. Trammell.
Thank you.
At this point, we're going to move to any motions or expedited papers. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, we have one paper for expedited consideration. That is Resolution Number 2013-R49 to amend Resolution Number 2013-R2-2, which designates which council members shall serve on the standing committees of council and the various boards, commissions, and committees to which council members are appointed for the purpose of appointing a council member to serve as a career and technical, on the Career and Technical Education Commission. I will need a motion for expedited consideration of that paper. Dr. Newbill, will you make that motion?
So moved, Madam Clerk.
Council is voting on Dr. Newbill's motion for expedited consideration of Resolution Number 2013-R49. Mr. Bilals?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Agulasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
That paper is before you for consideration.
Thank you very much. At this point, are there any questions from council about this paper? This paper simply amends committee assignments and other appointments. As you know, there were some authorities, boards, and commissions that were chaired or had members that are no longer with us after the most recent election, and this resolves one of those issues by appointing Ms. Mosby to the Career and Technical Education Commission. At this point, we'll have a public hearing on the matter. Are there those to speak in support? Are there those to speak in opposition? Please bring it back to council, Mr. Clerk.
Council is voting on Resolution Number 2013-D-
I'm sorry. What I meant was, is there any discussion by council members? I see none. Very well, please call the question, Ms. Clerk.
Council is voting on Resolution Number 2013-R49. Mr. Bilals?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Agulasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
That paper has been adopted.
Thank you very much. Consent agenda?
The consent agenda consists of the following items. Item number one, ordinance number 2012-192, to amend and reordain Chapter 98, Article 8, Division 1 of the City Code by adding therein a new section 98-637.1 concerning a business license incentive program for qualifying businesses for the purpose of exempting new businesses that locate within the city from paying business, professional, and occupational license taxes for a period not to exceed two years. Item number three, ordinance number 2013-1, to authorize the CAO for and on behalf of the city of Richmond to execute a lease as amended between Cotab Ventures as Lesser and the city of Richmond as Lacy for the purpose of providing a temporary site for the East End Library at 3001 Nine Mill Road, Unit C and Unit D for a period of six months beginning February 1, 2013. Item number four, ordinance number 2013-2, to amend and reordain City Code Section 110-37 concerning taxi cap rates for the purpose of providing that for a trip originating at Richmond International Airport, the rate shall be $10 or the charge registered on the meter, whichever is greater, plus $2. Item number five, ordinance number 2013-3, to authorize the CAO to accept $50,000 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and to appropriate the increase to the fiscal year 1213 special fund budget by increasing estimated revenues and the amount appropriated to the Department of Fire and Emergency Services by $50,000 for the purpose of a Richmond MSA public outreach and education project. Item number seven, ordinance number 213-5, to authorize the special use of the property known as 3600 Forest Hill Avenue for the purposes of permitting live entertainment and an outdoor dining area upon certain terms and conditions. Item number eight, ordinance number 2013-8, to amend ordinance number 2009-102-114 adopted June 22, 2009, which authorized the special use of the property known as 508 Liberty Avenue for office use with accessory parking, to authorize office use in the existing basement upon certain terms and conditions. Item number nine, ordinance number 2013-9, to close to public use and travel a portion of West 24th Street located north of Perry Street between West 22nd and West 24th Streets, consisting of approximately 2,584 square feet upon certain terms and conditions. Item number 10, ordinance number 2013-11, to authorize the special use of the property known as 4030 MacArthur Avenue for the purposes of permitting an outdoor dining area and expansion of the existing building upon certain terms and conditions. Item number 12, ordinance number 2013-18, to authorize the CAO to accept funds in the amount of $135,185 from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and to appropriate the increase to the fiscal year 1213 special fund budget by increasing estimated revenues and the amount appropriated to the Department of Fire and Emergency Services by $135,185 for the purpose of providing for the purchase of computer hardware and software to increase critical information sharing and collaboration efforts between the city and other entities at the Port of Richmond and generally within the city of Richmond. Item number 13, ordinance number 2013-19, to amend ordinance number 2012-188-2013-3 adopted January 28, 2013, which ordained a new City Code Section 98-249.1, imposing a moratorium on acceptance of applications from nonprofit organizations for exemption from real or tangible personal property taxation for the purpose of temporarily extending the deadline for the completion of the property tax exemption by designation committees' review of applications for tax exemption by designation and the deadline for which ordinances exempting property from taxation must be introduced beyond the deadline set forth in City Code Section 98-248.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there persons that wish to speak in favor of any item on the consent agenda?
Mr. President, Madam Vice President, members of council, good evening. My name is Troy Bell. I'm the Director of Marketing and Air Service Development at Richmond International Airport. I'd like to briefly speak in support of item number four on the consent agenda, ordinance 2013-2. This is to amend and reordain City Code concerning taxi rates for trips originating at Richmond International Airport, for the very reason that the airport believes that this amendment supports improved safety and appearance for taxi cab services at Richmond International Airport. This is supported by the airport itself, by ground transportation operators, and we are saying this, of course, on behalf of visitors to the Richmond region. We would appreciate your consideration and adoption of this measure, and that's it briefly. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bell. Pleasure seeing you today. Seeing no one else coming to, well, I do see someone else coming to speak in favor.
Mr. President, Madam Vice President, members of council, Andy Conlin, just here to speak about item number 10 regarding the special use on 4030 MacArthur Avenue, Dots Back End for the outdoor dining. We have a number of folks here that are waiting to get out of here to get back and celebrate at the new location on the very MacArthur Avenue that you just gave a nice reward to for coming and doing all the great things they do. So we'll be happy to answer any questions if you want. If there's anyone in opposition, we'd like to reserve some time to answer those questions. That's all we have.
Any others to speak in favor?
Hello, my name is Will Herring, and I'm one of the owner-operators of Crossroads Coffee at 3600 Forest Hill. Sorry, I don't remember the number of our special use permit. Forgive me, but my partner, Olivia Patrick, is here with me, and I also have, in the last week, accumulated over 500 signatures from customers who would like to see us keep our outside seating in place and the live music, which has become a critical part of our business model. I just want to thank you for your time and ask for your support. Also, I would just like to say what a thrill it's been to operate Crossroads for 10 years in the neighborhood where we live. I walk to work, I'm just a few blocks away. It's a neighborhood place, and we draw from several neighborhoods in the area, and it's a real pleasure to be doing this for 10 years. So thank you for your time and for your consideration. I don't know if there is a protocol for submitting the petitions or not.
You can leave him with the clerk. If you just place it down there, she'll come around and grab it.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. And if there's anybody else in support of anything, please line up behind this gentleman.
Mr. President, Madam Vice President, I'm Paulo Franco. I'm a citizen of the city of Richmond, council members, and I'm here today to support the ordinance, I think it's 2013-5 for Crossroads. I'm a citizen of Woodland Heights, live in the neighborhood, and I wanted to come out here and support my friends Will and Olivia. They have made a wonderful place for Crossroads. I've lived in Woodland Heights all the years that I've lived in Richmond, and I can tell you truthfully that it's a better neighborhood because of Crossroads. It's a central meeting point for residents. The live music is added, just a new dimension, and it's a wonderful place for the citizens to come and hang out and relax, and I urge you to adopt a special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody here to speak in opposition to any paper? And if there's anybody here to speak in opposition, please come down and line up.
Good evening. My name is Better Graham. I live at 401 Bland Street, up the street from the coffee shop. And the reason I'm not for it, because I don't have anywhere to park. When they have something, it's parked on both sides of the streets. And my daughter, we have a special parking for her because she's handicapped, and most of the time I have to walk to the coffee shop and tell them to move the cars to get And I'm not for it. Because one reason I'm not for it, it's another one because I was on my porch one day, the fireman came in off Foster Avenue, Foster Avenue. They couldn't come in on Foster Avenue, they had to back all the way out to Foster Avenue to get to Bland Street and go up the hill. And I live at 401. If that was my house, what would I do? What could I do? If the fireman came to my house on both sides of the street, both sides of the streets, it's cars on both sides of the street, so I had to wait on this end for this person to come by, so this person had to wait for the other one to come by. That's when they have something at the shop on both sides of the street, it's no parking. People can't get by. Thank you.
My name is Eloise Murphy. I'm not opposed to what Will wants to do, I just think that if he wants to do it, he has to find a parking space, you know, he has to work out the parking issues with his customers.
Thank you very much. Seeing no others in support or opposition to any papers, we'll bring it back to council for discussion. Is there any council discussion on any, on any paper on tonight's consent agenda? I see Mr. Agulasto's hand.
Thank you. With regards to Crossroads Coffee House, I appreciate everybody coming down tonight to speak in favor and in opposition to this. It's clearly a business that has operated for 10 years, and that's a tremendous feat, given the climate of the last few. And I congratulate you for being an added amenity for the community, and I know that they greatly appreciate your service. When it comes to parking and traffic concerns, I know that there's been some voices heard on this issue, and I know that we've been trying to push some things over to the administration and ask Tom Flynn to work with us so that we can satisfy both the issues regarding parking, the dangerous intersection at Forest Hill and Sims. So I'm committed to making sure that those issues get resolved, but I personally don't think that the traffic concerns and/or some of the parking concerns that may or may not be addressed by Crossroads would be something to hold up this special use permit. In the end, they have been operating this business for 10 years with no code violations, and at this stage, they're simply asking to be put into compliance.
Thank you, Mr. Agulasto. Are there any other comments about any of the papers on the consent agenda?
Mr. President.
Mr. Hilbert?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say a brief word about the stocks back in special use permit. You all saw earlier this evening the support of the merchants along MacArthur Avenue. Dots Back has long been an institution of North Side, and we appreciate their investment in our city to expand their business, and I would ask my colleagues to support this special use permit. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hilbert. Any other comments from council members? Then I'll speak briefly as to one paper, and that's the first paper on tonight's agenda, which exempts new businesses and relocating businesses from the Business Professional License Tax. To businesses or to folks that are thinking about starting a business in the city or looking to relocate their business from a county, please know the city with this paper is saying, "We want to work with you, and we're open for business." For businesses that are in the city and have been loyal to the city, please know that during tonight's introduction of papers, we will be introducing a paper that will appoint a task force to review the current business and professional license tax and provide a report back with recommendations on what we can do as a council and as a city to bring it into a situation that is substantially better for business while not negatively affecting the city's bottom line. I look forward to working with the members of that task force, they'll be named at a later date, but please know that we are paying attention to both current businesses and encouraging new businesses to locate in our city. Thank you. Call the question, Mr. Clerk.
Council is voting on tonight's consent agenda items as presented, which include item one, items three through five, seven through 10, 12, and 13. Mr. Bilals?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Agulasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
Consent agenda has been adopted.
Thank you very much. At this point, we'll have the approval of the minutes.
The minutes to be approved are from the Monday, January 14, the revised minutes of the informal meeting, the informal meeting of Monday, January 28, and the formal meeting of Monday, January 28. Ms. Trammell, will you make a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved, Madam Clerk.
Council of vote is voting on council member Trammell's motion to approve the minutes as presented. Mr. Bilals?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye, with the exception of the minutes of the last council meeting, I was not present. I abstained from those.
Mr. Agulasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
Those minutes have been adopted.
Thank you. At this point, we're going to move on to announcements and reports from the members of council. And last time I started with Dr. Newbill, so this time I'll start with Mr. Bilals.
No announcements, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Bilals. Ms. Graziano?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I have really no announcements, except to announce that finance is going to meet on the 21st of February, at 3 o'clock in these chambers.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Graziano. Ms. Mosby?
Just want to announce that the 9th District will hold its very first district meeting on February 21 at J.L. Francis Elementary at 5146 Sneed Road. So I'm asking all of our district constituents to please come out and be a part of our process to move forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Mr. Agulasto.
Thank you. First, I want to thank everybody that came out last week for our budget meeting. For those who didn't attend, I want to make sure that you understand what the audience was polled and what they wanted as their priorities for this budget cycle. Number one was infrastructure, number two was education, and number three was parks and recreation. So for those who weren't able to attend, that was kind of how the group attending recommended we support our city budget. I also would like to just thank all the people who have contacted me in the last couple of weeks, whether it be voicemail, actual phone calls to me directly, or email showing support or opposition to some of the papers that we adopt here at council. I think it's very important that you reach out to us and let us know what you're thinking. I think that's part of the process, and know that I'm going to try to be as responsive as possible. At the same time, I'm also providing updates on Facebook, and you can join our newsletter. So please reach out to me, and I look forward to the next few conversations that we have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Agulasto. Mr. Hilbert.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wanted to alert folks of the Northside that there'll be a Battery Park Visioning Exercise next Tuesday, February 19th, from 6:30 to 8:30 at the Northside Family Learning Center, 800 West Graham Road. That's just one block east of Chamberlain Avenue. It's free and open to the community, and what we're trying to do with this is to have an interactive discussion facilitated by dedicated members of the Battery Park community to determine the potential uses and improvements within the Battery Park corridor. The goal is to discuss existing uses and assets of the parks corridor by establishing a vision and goal in continued improvement of the surrounding area. So, we want everyone to come out. There will be food and refreshments provided for those that attend, and we really want input from everyone. And I want to say a thank you to Mario Wells, VCU student, who is working on this project, as well as the Friends of Battery Park. Wanted to remind everyone that beginning March the 11th, that the city will begin imposing fines for supercans and recycle bins that are left out days after the recycle or trash pickup. This is a matter of consideration. I know that particularly in the fan and some other areas of dense development, it can be quite imposing for someone's supercan and/or trash can to be out in the right of way. So, I would ask everyone to take special regard to this and know that the city will be enforcing this measure. It's certainly on the books now, and that can be done, but we're trying to give everyone a warning on that. You'll get a notification sticker on your supercan, and then you'll receive a letter, and if the can is not removed after that, then fines can be imposed. So, just ask for some consideration of your neighbors and our appearance of the city. Finally, or, excuse me, relative to district news, if you would like to be added to our district email distribution list, please fill out, or, excuse me, send Lisa Townes your email information at lisa.townes, T-O-W-N-E-S, at richmondgov.com, or you can give her a call at 646-6055. Next Wednesday, February 20th, we'll be having a meeting of the Education and Human Services Committee here at City Hall at 5:00 in council chambers. We will have an overview of the Richmond Workforce Development Pipeline. We will also speak with, or, and presenting on that topic will be Jamison Manchin, the Workforce Development Programs Administrator, Vicki Oakley, RPS Chief Academic Officer, in trying to get computer resources and access for our public school students. And we will also receive information as to how we, we're really going to try and drill down and see if we can put a computer into as many kids' hands as possible within the city. So if you have any ideas on that, we'd certainly welcome that, and we would also welcome either individually or civic association or corporate donations to make that happen will gladly be accepted. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hilbert. Ms. Trammell.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to thank Parker for what he said earlier, because, you know, we are council members, and we have asked the citizens to contact us in reference to anything that relates not only in our district but also in the city of Richmond, from the budget to police and fire, to school teachers, to homeless, to just everything, everything. And I know that I'm very passionate about our police chief, because I've heard so many people say about him, he's, you know, he's down to earth. He's a down-to-earth guy. And for the differences between whatever, we don't care about some of the issues that's been out there in the papers or in the news or whatever. We care about that crime is down. Violent crime is down in our city. And if you live in a poor district or you represent a poor district, like people that don't have anything to eat, or people don't know if they're going, they don't even have a car to drive, they don't even know if they're going to be able to put food on the table for their children, send their children to school hungry in the mornings, coming home at night, they don't have food. And when you have a chief that reaches out to them and puts his arm around them and says, "It's going to be all right," that means something. That's something. And yeah, I know that there's two different forms of government here. I'm not dumb. I know we can't tell them what to do. None of us can. None of us council members can tell the mayor what to do. And thank God that Mr. Marshall does take his time to, you know, reach out to the people, to the business people and all of that, to try to earn things out when things are not always going smoothly. Because sitting up here does not mean that our job runs so smoothly, because it doesn't. But I just want everybody to know that I appreciate our chief. I appreciate, I appreciate what he has done for us and for those officers. And yet, our public safety meeting, we hollered and screamed that they need a raise. Yeah, they need a raise. So does our firefighters, so does our school teachers, so does our employees. Everybody. And I think if we buckle down, we can find it. We can find it. We need to keep everyone here. We got some very, very good employees, very good employees. And anyway, we're going to work hard on this budget, all of us are, like we do every year. And we have sacrificed in the past, gave up some of our stuff in our district to help. So, I want people to know that too. So please pray for our chief, pray that he stays, because it's, it's, it just touched me when someone in my district, Joshua Young, a young man that came here tonight and said, "I'm just a kid." You know what? You spoke for thousands of other kids that couldn't be here tonight to tell us what the chief has done for you, to take you to his family's house, children. And that's what we've yelled and screamed about. We want the children in our city to know that there's hope. There's hope for them. I don't know of anyone else that's doing that for our children, taking them to their houses and feed them and introducing them to their parents. So remember what our chief did, as I said. He is the shining star of Richmond, Virginia, our chief is. We will now have a meeting in April, I mean, in January. Our next eighth district meeting will be April the 18th. Our meetings will start back on a Thursday, April the 18th, at 6:00 p.m. at the satellite. This right here is your free smoke alarm. If you call 646-1526, those firefighters will come to your house, to your apartment, whatever. They will put this up for free. Don't cost a dime, so use it while we got it. Again, 646-1526. Or go to your nearest fire station, tell those firefighters your smoke alarm is beeping or it's not working, because we all know these smoke alarms save your lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trammell. Ms. Trammell, did you want to give anybody a heads up on the Public Safety Committee change? We have, usually it falls on Presidents Day, and it's since, you're not going to hold it, then do you want to tell everybody when it is going to be held, on the February 26th?
Thank you, Mr. President. I forgot, this coming Monday is a holiday, right?
That's right.
Forgot. We're not here Monday. So we're going to have our public safety meeting, it's going to be February the 26th. That's on a Tuesday? Tuesday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Newbill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, Mr. Corey Harris was recognized by council. He's an American blues and reggae musician. Of particular note is the fact that he's from Richmond Fulton Community and has chronicled in his most recent album entitled Fulton Blues, The History of That Community. And he has graciously put at the disposal of our community his extraordinary talents and is conducting a benefit concert as we speak. And so if any folks would love to hear an extraordinary American blues and reggae musician, please get on down to the Bird Theater on Carey Street and support his efforts as he supports the work of the residents in the Fulton Community to establish a memorial park that will preserve the very history that is chronicled in his album. So this is a benefit concert for the Fulton Memorial Park. So you have enough time to get on down to Bird Theater now. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Dr. Newbill. Ms. Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple announcements that I'd like to make. One is that I want to make sure that all of the council members and citizens of the city are aware of the grand opening of the Resource Workforce Center. This is part of our regional workforce centers throughout the metropolitan area. We have several locations in, we have a location in Chesterfield, one or two locations in Hinricho, and we are finally opening the center in the city of Richmond. It is located at 203 East Carey Street. The opening ceremony, ribbon-cutting ceremony is on February the 13th, which is this week Wednesday, at 10:00 a.m. You're all invited, and I also would encourage you, if there are other persons that you know that are interested in a job in the region, that they are welcome to come as well. There will be additional counselors on hand as well, as the city will be there to talk about the services that is provided out of this workforce center. And so I would encourage all of us to at least have a representative from our office, from our civic associations, to attend so that we can get a better scope, a better appreciation for the scope of work that is provided through the workforce centers. In addition to that, I'd also like to announce, we had, I had a town meeting this past Saturday at the Hall Street Library, and Dr. Chandra Mohammed of the Sixth District School Board was one of our guests, and we talked a lot about what's happening in our Richmond public school system. Our school system needs a lot of support from our communities, from our parents, as well as working more cooperatively with the school board and council members working together. We have recently had a groundbreaking, ribbon-cutting ceremony, excuse me, of the Oak Grove Bell Meet School at the beginning of the year. We've not opened that school for a community tour. So, Dr. Chandra Mohammed is joining with me, as well as school board representatives from the Eighth District and from the Ninth District, I think, that have students, and I would encourage my colleagues, all of my colleagues as well, to be a part of that effort to have a community tour of the facility. But in addition to that, the school's board staff will be on hand to talk about the educational achievements of the school, their strategic plan as it relates to closing and improving the achievements there. There will also be a tour of the watershed, and the city's recreational center is going to be opening very soon, and we'll be able to tour some of that as well. This will also give us an opportunity, this will happen after we've received the mayor's proposed budget for the year. We will already have seen the school board's budget, and we'll have an opportunity to better talk about both of those budgets as a part of this meeting as well. So that will be on March the 10th. It will be at Oak Grove Bell Meet. It will be at 3:00 in the afternoon on a Saturday, and we expect that meeting will probably last about three hours to cover the detailed information about the budget as well as give parents in the community an opportunity to get a better idea of what's going on in that school and other schools in the city. One last announcement, on Wednesday afternoon at 2:00, I will be having a meeting for Sector 203 of the Sixth District. The leaders of that district will be coming together. We have broken the Sixth District down into four sectors. Each Wednesday, one of those sector's leaders have a meeting to carry out a strategic plan that has been developed and designed by the residents. And so those meetings will be held on a monthly basis on Wednesday by sector, this sector, this Wednesday, Sector 602, which is Eastview. We will be concluding our discussion about the Community Resource Center that was promised to the community that has not gotten underground yet. That will be the main focus of the meeting, in addition to talking with the Richmond Redevelopment Housing Authority as it relates to their management and their services for Mosby, Wickham, and Raven Street. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I only have a few things to say. One, you may have heard recently that the city is going to be enforcing the supercan ordinance. That can be found at Section 8644A of the city code. What it does is say that each supercan has a serial number assigned to an address, and if you don't remove your supercan off basically the streets in the appropriate timeframe, you can be fined up to $50. There's been a lot of confusion about how to find out what your serial number is and that sort of thing. I'm going to tell you right now that you can call the city's 311 or put in a citizen request if there are other issues or problems with that. You can email me at charles.samuels@richmondgov.com. You can also call my office at 646-6532. If you realize that you don't know which supercan is yours, or if you find that your supercan is broken, the city's code section 86.81C provides that any citizen can give notice to the city that their supercan has been broken or is missing and can be replaced at no cost. So if you don't know where your supercan is and you're concerned about this going into effect next month, then please let the city know that you don't know where your supercan is so we can get you squared away. I don't want to see people fined who don't need to be. Lastly, is the Fourth Annual West Grace Street Candlelight Home Tour. That is this coming Saturday, February 16th, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. It's a romantic walking tour of historic homes along West Grace Street with chefs' creations from neighborhood restaurants. There's going to be a themed wine glass for tasting Virginia wine offerings. Tickets you can pick up at the Virginia Center for Architecture at 2501 Monument Avenue, Strawberry Street Vineyards at 407 Strawberry Street, Carytown Bistro, 3200 West Cary, Lift Coffee Shop at 2ST 218 West Broad Street, or Oleo, 2001 and a half West Main Street. Tickets are $20 in advance. You can visit westgracestreet.com for more information. That's going to do it for my announcements tonight. We do have one paper that needs to be amended. That was the paper Mr. Agulasto had brought up earlier tonight. I'd ask that we do that, Mr. Clerk, and then we'll go to introduction of new papers.
Mr. President, item number 11 is ordinance number 2013-12, and that is up for amendment and the continuance of that paper. And it reads, "To amend Chapter 102, Article 4, Division 1 of the city code by adding a new section numbered 102-246, and to amend the city code subsection 102-243 concerning parking violations and penalties of noncompliance with certain parking requirements..."
parking violations and penalties of noncompliance with certain parking requirements, both for the purpose of requiring that the curbside wheels of vehicles parked on streets parallel to a curb shall not be more than 12 inches from such curb, and imposing a fine for the violation of such requirement." I will need to have, I'm sorry, the proposed amendment to that paper is as follows. To amend the ordinance number 2013-12, page 1, line 20, after the period following the ward curb, insert the sentence, "This section shall not apply for persons parking vehicles on road sides without curbs." I will need a motion to accept the amendment to that paper and have it continued to Monday, February 25th. Ms. Graziano, will you make that motion?
移到
Council is voting on Ms. Graziano's motion to accept the amendment to item number 11 as read and have that paper continued until Monday, February 25th. Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
That motion has been adopted, and that paper will be before you again on Monday,
Thank you very much, Ms. Clerk. At this point, may we please have introduction of new legislation?
Yes, new legislation for this evening is as follows. Ordinance number 2013-20, to authorize the CAO to accept donations of temporary and permanent easements on a portion of 2011 Williamsburg Road at the southwest corner of the intersection of Williamsburg Road and Montpelier Street and Gilley, from Gilley Investments LLC for the purpose of the erection and maintenance of a gateway sign as part of the Fulton Area Commercial Corridor Improvement Project. Planning Commission, February 19th. Council's public hearing date, February 25th. Ordinance number 2013-21, to authorize the CAO or written designee thereof to execute the necessary documents and take the necessary steps to complete the rails-to-trails conversion of a portion of railroad property known as the James River Industrial Track and the property known as 3111 Water Street to the city's corporate boundaries for the Virginia Capitol Trail Project. Council's Land Use, Housing and Transportation Standing Committee meeting, February 19th. Council's public hearing date, February 25th. Ordinance number 2013-22, to amend the City Code subsection 42-41 for the purpose of providing that revenues from sales, lease, or other uses of formal school properties to be set aside for the construction of new public school facilities for the purpose of operations of the school board of the city of Richmond. Council's Land Use, Housing and Transportation Standing Committee, February 19th. Council's public hearing date, February 25th. Ordinance number 2013-23, to amend the ordinance number 2010-173-166, which establishes a GRTC and Transit Study Task Force to provide that two city council members shall serve on the task force as its co-chairs. Council's Land Use, Housing and Transportation Standing Committee, February 19th. Council's public hearing date, February 25th. Ordinance number 2013-24, to authorize the CAO to accept $5,000 from the Virginia Commission for the Arts for the, for the purpose of providing a grant to Culture Works. Council's Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee meeting, February 21st. Council's public hearing date, February 25th. Ordinance number 2013-25, to amend ordinance number 2012-54-69 for the purpose of making a grant to the Richmond Redevelopment and Housing Authority to provide community improvement projects in the Raven Street community. Council's Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, February 21st. Council's public hearing date, February 25th. Ordinance number 2013-26, to establish a Business, Professional, and Occupational License Tax Task Force to provide expert advice and recommendations to the council and the mayor concerning the state and local legislation necessary to make the city's businesses professional and occupational tax licenses more competitive with such taxes imposed by other jurisdictions in the Richmond metropolitan area. Council's Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, February 21st. Council's public hearing date, February 25th. Ordinance number 2013-27, to authorize the CAO to execute a Police Mutual Aid Joint Aviation Agreement between the County of Henrico, Chesterfield County, and the city of Richmond for the purpose of operating a joint aviation unit to support aerial law enforcement activities in the party jurisdictions. Council's Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, February 21st. Council's public hearing date, February 25th. Ordinance number 2013-28, to amend Chapter 26, Article 1 of the City Code by adding a new section, 26-14, for the purpose of authorizing the CAO or written designee thereof to enter into and from time to time modify license agreements by which the city licenses to parties other than the city parking spaces within city-owned parking facilities not used for city employee parking pursuant to certain terms and conditions. Council's Governmental Operations Standing Committee, February 28. Council's public hearing date, March 11th. Ordinance number 2013-29, to authorize a special use of 1318 Parkwood Avenue for the purpose of permitting a two-family detached dwelling upon certain terms and conditions. Planning Commission, March 4th. Council's public hearing date, March 11th. Ordinance number 2013-30, to authorize a special use of 1316 Parkwood Avenue for the purpose of permitting a two-family detached dwelling upon certain terms and conditions. Planning Commission, February, I'm sorry, Planning Commission, March the 4th. Council's public hearing date, March 11th. Ordinance number 2013-31, to name an unnamed alley in the block bound by Floyd Avenue, North Belmont Avenue, Grove Avenue, and North Auburn Avenue that runs along the south and west boundaries of the properties known as 100 North Belmont Avenue, 102 North Belmont Avenue, 104 North Belmont Avenue, and 1307 Floyd Grove Avenue as Bertha's Country Lane. Council's Land Use, Housing and Transportation Standing Committee, February 19th. Council's public hearing date, February 25th. Resolution number 2013-R50, to approve an expenditure of $1,200 from the council district funds for the Fifth District to make a donation to storefront for community design to conduct three community workshop sessions for residents and business owners in the Spring Hill community. Council's public hearing date, February 25th. Resolution number 2013-R51, to approve an expenditure of $2,500 from the council district fund for the Seventh District to make a donation to the communities and schools for the expansion of integrated support services for the students at Bellevue Elementary School. Council's public hearing date, February 25th. Resolution number 2013-R52, to approve an expenditure of $300 from the council district funds for the Eighth District to make a donation to Camp Divas Date with Dad Dinner and Dance on March 17, 2013. Council's public hearing date, February 25th. Resolution number 2013-R53, to approve an expenditure in the amount of $350 from the council district funds for the Seventh District to make a donation to Camp Divas Date with Dad Dinner and Dance on March 17, 2013. Council's public hearing date, February 25th. And resolution number 2013-R54, to amend resolution number 2013-R2-2 for the purpose of appointing council members to serve on the GRTC and Transit Study Task Force. Council's Land Use, Housing and Transportation Standing Committee meeting, February 19th. Council's public hearing date, February 25th. Mr. President, that is all the new legislation that I have for this evening.
Thank you so much. Unless there is any other comment or action needed by this council tonight, this meeting is adjourned.
And 1 hour 40 minutes from the time we got started. We got started right on time tonight. President Samuels calling the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. We got to appointments and reappointments, there's only one. There was an appointment of Carol Murray to the Clean City Commission. Then we got to awards and presentations, two of them tonight. One was to the Bellevue Merchants Association for Christmas on MacArthur, and the other was to Corey Harris, a blues and reggae musician. He's chronicling the history of Fulton Hills neighborhood in his album, his latest album called Fulton Blues. And he was here tonight to receive an award, and he is performing tonight, I believe, at the Bird Theater. Got to the agenda review, there were no items left on the regular agenda, as we said here when we first came on the air. They were all continued until either the next meeting or the meeting after that one. Yeah, we had no regular agenda items tonight. Got to the citizens' comment period, and that took oh, about 25 minutes. We had one expedited consideration paper, and that one is designated which council members will serve on which committees. And that has to happen every so often when we had, as you say, there's, you know, three new council members this year. So, so the names that were on the previous committees, well, they are no longer on council, so they had to put new people in. And that's kind of a housekeeping thing, and putting some people in different committees, that sort of thing. But that didn't take long at all. We got to the consent agenda, that only took 15 minutes before that was approved unanimously. Got to the approval of minutes, reports from council members, and then about five minutes ago, we had one paper that had to be amended and continued. There was one about parking so close to the curbs, and that one was amended. It'll be continued until our next meeting, which will be two weeks from tonight, on the 25th of February. And then we had the introduction of papers and the adjournment. Before we adjourn, I would like to just take a quick moment to say we lost a member of the city, he had been a city employee, and then a very important member of the city, very active in the city for a long time. Charles Peters passed away a couple of weeks ago, and memorial service this past weekend. Those who knew Charles knew, he was a great guy, motorcycle enthusiast, fishing, and he was just a guy who was always, always there when you wanted to talk to him. He always made himself available in the various committees he worked on. And Charles is going to be missed by the city of Richmond. We'll be back in two weeks from tonight. By the way, Happy Valentine's Day, it's coming up this coming Thursday, the 14th, and we'll see you again two weeks from tonight on the 25th of February. And so for gavel to gavel, I'm Dick Harmon saying goodnight.